I'd like to call this Celine City Council meeting to order. If you'd please rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Okay, members present this evening are myself, Mayor Marl, councilmembers Gearbaugh, Cybo Koenig, Mayor Protem Rhodes, councilmember Roth, and Tahar. Ms. Dillon is, of course, absent this evening. From city staff, we have city manager Campbell, deputy clerk Rutledge, city treasurer Bennett, police chief Rennick, city superintendent engineer Ruble, DPW director Fordice, and Parks and Rec director Scruggs. And of course, up at the dais, we have our bond council Roger Swetts. For the rest of you, if you'd be so kind, excuse me, to sign in the back, we would appreciate that. At this time, I would seek a motion to approve the agenda as amended. You have in front of you a motion that has been prepared by staff, which is going to be advanced by Mayor Protem Rhodes. It's new business item 15-53, traffic control order number 2323, for no parking, 20-minute non-commercial loading zone. So again, that'll be added under new business. It'll be the last item under new business, item 15-53. Are there any additions to the agenda this evening? No, then I would seek a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Moved by Mayor Protem Rhodes. Is there a second?
Support.
Support by councilmember Roth. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. This time, the chair would seek a motion to excuse the absence of councilwoman Janet Dillon.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Tahar. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Gearbaugh. I'll get you on the next one, Ms. Cybo Koenig. All those in favor of excusing the absence signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We have actually three presentations this evening, all of which I'm very pleased with. And the first is Trinity Lutheran 150th anniversary. And so I know we have the two pastors and a number of parishioners with us this evening. Why don't you come forward, if you would?
Well, pastors and parishioners and my fellow community members, we thought it was appropriate and prudent to prepare a resolution, which has not only been signed by myself, but all of the other six members of city council, to celebrate your church's 150th anniversary, which is a pretty amazing milestone. And I'm not going to read this in its entirety, but I do want to read a few sections, so that people are aware of the history and aware of the commitment. And so this is entitled Trinity Evangelical Lutheran Church 150th Anniversary, 1865 to 2015. Whereas Trinity Evangelical Lutheran will celebrate its 150th year in Celine, which was dedicated to the service of God and to the community in 1865 by Reverend Frederick Schmidt and a small group of dedicated members. And whereas in 1871, the cornerstone was laid for a new church on the corner of East Michigan Ave. and North Harris Street in Celine, Michigan, and the building was completed in 1872. And whereas we, the city council and city of Celine, give pause, honor, and praise this day for the deep and abiding commitment of those who in faith began this church, and for all those who have given so unselfishly during these many years to help this church grow and thrive, providing worship and fellowship to many members of the Celine community. Now therefore, be it resolved that Brian D. Marl, mayor of the city of Celine, members of the Celine City Council, and citizens of Celine, do hereby extend the certificate of recognition to the members of Trinity Evangelical Lutheran Church on the occasion of their 150th anniversary, with sincere best wishes for many more years of continued spiritual growth. And we hereby set our hands and seal to this document on the 16th day of March 2015. And of course, this is signed by myself, Brian Marl, Mayor Protem David Rhodes, councilmembers Janet Dillon, Dean Gearbaugh, Jim Roth, Terry Cybo Koenig, and Linda Tahar. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Pastors always have something to say. Let me just say this. This is a tremendous accomplishment, and congratulations to you both, all the lay leaders and all the parishioners. You know, there are a lot of churches that come and go, but this one has thrived and prospered in our community for 150 years. And as I was preparing this resolution with my council colleagues and with the clerk's office, I thought back to my service as a former congregational president of St. Paul Church, when nine years ago, we celebrated our 100th anniversary. So I'm hoping that we get to 150, but it was a very, very special time in my life, and I know you feel the same about your church. So, gentlemen, would you like to say a few words?
Very briefly, but I just would like to thank everyone here for this honor, and we'd like to thank you for the support that you've given to us in our 150th year, and it's a pleasure to be your neighbors across the street and work with you.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Congratulations. Can I invite Parks and Rec director Scruggs up and councilmember Roth as the liaison to the youth council? Will you join me up here? And so we're on to the Youth of the Year Award.
Thank you. I'm Carla Scruggs. I'm the Parks and Recreation Director, and I am here representing Jody Roberts, who would normally be here to do these presentations, but unfortunately, she's not able to be with us tonight. So on behalf of her, I'm going to do my best to make these presentations. This is the 12th year for the Youth of the Year Award, and this year, we had 13 nominations, outstanding nominations, I might say. Our Youth of the Year this year is awarded to Emily Deal, and she is going to be presented her award at the Celine Salutes, which is going to be Friday, March 27. And tonight, we're here to honor all of our nominees, and these nominees are recognized for volunteer efforts, for their community service, for leadership roles, and all of their extracurricular activities. And as I announce your name, you're going to come up here and get your award from our mayor and Mr. Roth, and grab your photos. Parents, feel free to take photos as well, and then we're going to have each of you stay up here for a group photo afterwards. So as I call out your name, I'm going to read a little bit about why you were nominated. First and foremost, we have Kelly Barbret. Unfortunately, she cannot be here this evening, but she received nominations from Olivia Walsh, Alex McPherson, and Celine Parks and Recreation. Kelly is the president of student council, was a girl state delegate, she's a National Honor Society, she's a five-year member of the Celine Youth Council, and is current chairperson, and is an avid Parks and Recreation volunteer, as well as she's on the foundation for the Celine area schools, and is a Main Street volunteer. So congratulations to Kelly. Next up, if Brian Blankenship could make his way forward. Brian was nominated by Ally Isa. Brian is a member of Strive, Interact, president of Venture Crew, an Eagle Scout, parliamentarian of Business Professionals of America, a senior patrol leader, a cross-country captain, and volunteers for Rotary Club and Food Gatherers. Congratulations, Brian. Did you get a photo? Yeah. Get a photo when they get their award here.
I want to go back.
Yeah, come back and grab a photo. Sorry.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Okay, next up, Jack Geiger. Jack was nominated by Kelly Barbret and Alicia Patel. Jack is a three-year member of Celine Youth Council and serves as current vice chair. He's the vice chair of the German Club, vice president for Food Gather-- or, excuse me, vice president of Food for Thought, a two-year varsity tennis captain, and is a member of Business Professionals of America, is a member of student council and National Honor Society. Vivian Hu was nominated by Dewan Kim and Emily Lance. Vivian is vice president of National Honor Society, treasurer of student council, and president for Food for Thought, which is a high school club that promotes importance of delicious yet healthy eating. Vivian volunteers at Food Gatherers, is on the tennis and cross-country teams, and is in the orchestra chamber-- orchestra, chamber orchestra, sorry.
Excellent.
Next up is Ally Isa. He was nominated by Rohan Kolcarney. Ally is the junior class president, is a member of Strive, the Diversity Circle, is on the Quiz Bowl and Model UN teams. He is a member of the Celine Youth Council, is on Link Crew, and is involved in MyLead. Ally volunteers at the Celine Evangelical Home. Next, we have Dewan Kim. Was nominated by Katie Bashan. Dewan is a member of the Celine High School Student Council and Fiddlers Philharmonic. He's the 2014 and 15 treasurer of the Celine Youth Council. And Dewan's not here, sorry. And Emily Lance. Emily was nominated by Nick Kursastis?
Karastis.
Karastis, sorry. And Hannah Traber. Emily is the junior class president, a Link Crew leader, and National Honor Society member. She's a dedicated member of the Celine Youth Council and a dance team captain. Alicia Patel. Alicia was nominated by Jack Geiger. Alicia is National Honor Society treasurer, co-vice president of Food for Thought, a band section leader, Link Crew, on the Celine Varsity Tennis Team, and volunteers tennis coach, and a member of the Key Club. Next up, Cassidy Polzin. She was nominated by Dave Mellor. Cassidy is in future-- is in Celine Future Farmers of America chapter, vice president and 4-H Club president. She volunteered for four years at Project RED, which is Rural Education Days with Michigan State University Cooperative Extension, to educate approximately 2,300 Washtenaw County third graders about where their food comes from. Very important. She is the 2014 and 15 youth ambassador for Washtenaw County to promote the importance of agriculture to the public. Next up, we have Brandon Puckett. Brandon was nominated by Mary Vesel. Brandon is a two-year member and current student council president of the South and West Washtenaw Consortium Career and Technical Education Program, which we're going to call SWWC in the future. Brandon has competed for SWWC in welding and fabrication, and he's a mentor to students in the welding and fabrication course. He is a Celine area fire department volunteer, and has been able to help citizens in real-life situations already. Next up is Kira Yang. Kira was nominated by Jack Geiger. Kira is the National Honor Society president, mock trial club founder and president, student representative of the Board of Education, An Hua Chinese School student board president, National Art Honor Society president, and Celine Fiddlers Philharmonic viola section leader. And our final nominee was Megan Young. Megan was nominated by Leslie Baugh. Megan is the Huron Volleyball Club volleyball team captain, FFA chapter officer reporter, and is in the SWWC. Megan volunteers with FFA, Food Gatherers, Special Olympics, peer-to-peer, Celine Area 4-H Fair, and teaches Sunday School. I'm sure you can all agree that we have a fantastic group for class number 12 of the Celine for Youth of the Year, and how about a robust congratulations, and for all they do in and for our community. They're really fantastic. Any other photos you want to get? We're good with pictures, all right? Thank you, guys.
We appreciate you and your families being with us tonight. Okay, my friends, moving on on our agenda this evening, the last presentation is actually from our state senator, and we're very honored to have her with us this evening, the honorable Rebecca Warren. I'll invite her up to the podium, and she's here to provide a legislative update. And Senator, we know that you have a very busy schedule, but we appreciate your commitment to public service and you taking the time to be with us this evening.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, for allowing me a few minutes on your agenda this evening. I think many of you know it has been my pleasure and privilege to represent parts of Washtenaw County in the state legislature for the last nine years, but this January, the effects of redistricting went into being, and I represent the city of Celine for the first time in my career. So I have spent the last few months, as I-- from January 1st until now, getting out to each of my new communities. I picked up in addition to the city of Celine, the city of Mylin, Pittsfield Township, and York Township, and just wanted to make sure that I was here to introduce myself, to make sure that you know that the lines of communication are open. I am happy to serve this community in any way that I can. I know we will be able to partner on many projects in the days and months ahead, and I want you to know that you should just feel free to reach out at any time, and I'm happy to come at your invitation and talk about anything that's happening in Lansing. I know there's a lot on people's minds right now, so I brought a couple of resources that I'm going to leave at the table back there and make sure each of you on council get it. The first thing is, in an effort to make myself as accessible as I can to my constituents around my district, I have monthly coffee hours, and I rotate them around the district. I rotate them at different times of day to make sure that I can accommodate folks who have working schedules, and so somewhere in the morning, somewhere at night, somewhere in the middle of the day. And I am hosting my first coffee hour in Celine next Monday, March 23rd, 8:30 to 9:30 at Kerrigan Cafe, and I'll leave these in the back, but if any of you or any of the members of the audience who are watching, we would love to have you join us there. What I usually do is talk about a couple of particular issues that I lay out in advance that I think are of priority at this time, and then I open the floor to any questions from folks who attend, so the conversations really do wander in any direction that are, you know, areas of interest to anyone who attends. The second thing that I brought, and I apologize, the printed versions of these were not ready in time for today. I'll probably have them tomorrow or Wednesday, but a little late for tonight. But I had a lot of questions about the May 5th ballot initiative for roads and schools, the sales tax increase, and so we put together this guide that has-- it's very nonpartisan. It has some of the pros and cons. It has the exact language that will be on the ballot, so that you can study that in advance. I know some folks have asked a lot of questions about that, so we'll be getting this out as the week goes on, but I at least wanted to print the material, so you had the information at your fingertips, and again, I'll leave some of the additional copies on the back for folks. I know it's probably one of the top priorities for a lot of us is to know what's going to happen with budgets. We're very interested in how we're going to be funding both our local revenue sharing for our communities that need the resources that we help provide from the state level and for our schools. And I'll just be honest and say that until the May 5th ballot initiative is passed, I think we'll be slow to do budgets this year. I think we will wait to see what happens, because should that ballot initiative fail, I think we'll have to try to figure out how to resolve the issue that we still have with our roads, bridges, and critical infrastructure. So I'm happy to come back as that budget process winds on and let you know what we're going to be looking at for our community and for Celine in particular, and I am happy to answer any questions if you have them. But really, I just wanted to come tonight to make sure that I introduced myself and to open the lines of communication, and I hope you will reach out to me at any time if there's something that I can do for you in Lansing or here in our community.
Thank you, Senator. Are there any questions for Senator Warren? We appreciate you leaving that material.
Absolutely.
In fact, we will make sure to promote your upcoming coffee hour on our city Facebook page.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
And I'll try my best to attend. You said that was next Monday at 8:30 at Kerrigan's Cafe?
Exactly.
Excellent, very good.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Senator. Have a good evening. Proceeding with the agenda, we come to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments? No citizen comments, then we'll proceed with the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve and submitted.
Moved by councilmember or Mayor Protem Rhodes to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Cybo Koenig. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to new business item 15-42, this is American Cancer Society Run for Your Life 5K. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the American Cancer Society ACS application for a community event slash use of public ways for a Run for Your Life 5K, and to acknowledge receipt of the March 2nd, 2015 email from police chief Rennick, the March 10th, 2015 email from DPW director Fordice, and the March 2nd, 2015 email from fire chief Heft, and to approve or not to approve the community event application, and to waive, or of course not to waive, the estimated DPW fees in the amount of $285, and estimated police fees in the amount of $952. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve and not waive.
Been moved by Gearbaugh to approve and not to waive. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Roth. I know we have some individuals here with the American Cancer Society who are organizing the 5K run. Does anyone care to speak? Thank you, Ms. Ragland.
Hi, I'm Karen Ragland, and I'm part of the American Cancer Society Relay for Life, and we're trying to put together this new event, which is sort of Run for Your Life. I'm sure each and every one of you here have experienced a family member, a loved one, with cancer. And what I'm hoping we can accomplish is just make the Relay for Life in our community a significant event. One of the ways to do that is our community has committed itself to health, and one of the ways-- the path to health is often running. So one of the things we're doing, we're launching this event this year with the hopes of having a Run for Your Life. So we're asking you to waive the fees, because this is a fundraiser, and our goal, of course, is to get a lot of participation in it, and it sounds like the fees-- we just heard the numbers tonight ourselves, but close to $1,000 would be a hefty amount for us to absorb. So, questions?
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Ragland. Are there any questions for the applicant? Mr. Rhodes?
I'm assuming that this is the first effort, and the intent is that this would become an annual event, is that correct?
That's a strong possibility, although there might be an interruption to that next year with the road construction.
Okay, because one of the things that we recently changed was to request that all community events come to us at one time, so that we could evaluate the amount of the city support that was required for all of them. And of course, it's a new one, so it didn't come to us at that point.
This was something we sort of planned, just started to plan out in the last couple of months, so I apologize for not having any information prior to that.
And personally, I do support the effort. I think the fact that our community holds these kind of events is one of the things that makes our community a special community than it is, and attracts people to us. However, I'm a bit torn about the not waiving or waiving of the fees. So, I don't know. I'm going to hold off on saying anything more about that for a moment and let others speak.
Can I just suggest that one of the things that we could do is we do look for sponsors, and it's, you know, in lieu of the fees, we also could make the city of Celine a major sponsor, which I think would have a lot of value, given the event and what it stands for.
Additional questions? Ms. Tahar?
Thank you. Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So first of all, let me just say that when I read through the application, almost I overlooked something. It wasn't clear that this was a community event. It looked like an American Cancer Society general event. There was no indication that I saw of local involvement, so that was a little bit confusing. So could you explain a little bit more of what the relationship of this event would be to Relay for Life? Is this replacing Relay for Life?
Or-- Let me just mention that-- Introduce yourself. I'm sorry. My name is Gretchen McCann, and I'm a volunteer for Relay for Life, and we have actually been doing this event for four years now, and it's been held at Liberty School, and in response to the community, we've changed everything up this year to make it a smaller event. We've changed the location to Henny Field. We've also made it a six-hour event as opposed to a 24-hour event. And this all came, as I said, because we were trying to find out what was going to be amenable to the community. And as a result of that, you know, we have made a couple of special additions to this, and one of them is the Run for Your Life. And so that's why it comes a little bit late. But this has already been part of the community for a couple of years, and this Relay for Life is the grassroots event for the Relay-- I'm sorry, the American Cancer Society that's been going on for years. Actually, it's the most successful event that they run, and we want to bring this to the community, as we have been doing in the past years, so that it's an event that we work together with families and everybody in the community, making it amenable by adding an event that would be especially interesting to people who are-- enjoy, you know, healthful events, is something that we wanted to bring them into.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, this is part of the whole Relay for Life.
It's one of the parts of the Relay for Life, and it's a new part of the Relay for Life, and perhaps that wasn't-- we were introducing it, you know, because we have been very fortunate to have some very professional people that have set this up for us.
Okay, yeah, that-- I completely missed that point in the application, so that was a concern, actually.
Of course.
Could I--
Absolutely. Please continue.
Okay. So, looking at the cost, I was a little stunned by the cost, too, as probably you were, and wondering if there are ways that you could work, perhaps, with the police department or the DPW possibly to change the route, or do other things that would cut down on some of the costs?
Derek has actually done the race a number of years, so he could speak to what's involved. I could speak with sincerity that there's a lot of people in the community that have not been a part of the event in the past, that would be happy to step up and help with barricades. If we were given sort of an outline of where volunteers were needed, you know, putting barricades out, taking them down, having people on the course, whatever was needed. I'm not sure how those dollars are made up from the police department, but we'd be happy to look for resources to help offset some of those costs, providing we fit in with the police department's guidelines.
Right.
Good evening. My name is Derek Stern. I've run, set up, helped set up a number of races in the Celine area over the course of the last few years, and one of the things that we try to do is keep the race courses to neighborhoods and keep it also onto school property if we can. That way, we minimize disruption to folks trying to get across Michigan Avenue. Obviously, we don't want to run on Michigan Avenue. That's a major barrier and certainly a source of a lot of cost. I think the majority of the cost probably comes in from the police department, just by way of the fact that we have to have an officer follow the race for safety purposes. They usually utilize cadets at some of the major intersections as well to monitor traffic flow. You know, this seems to be a little bit more than I'm used to in terms of police costs, but I don't know, you know, again, having run some races in the past, I've seen where this would be on par, but I don't know what the actual cost is after the race is put on either. So I know what the estimate is prior to, but I don't know what the cost is afterwards. But we will have a number of volunteers, so if that can help replace some of the police costs as well, we would certainly be willing to go out and try to attract more volunteers if that helps keep the cost down as well.
Can you follow up, Mr. Tahar?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Roth?
Yeah, I was just like my fellow council member, Mr. Tahar, we were totally blindsided by when Steve Wyndham's name was on the application. I would have felt better if there had been a resident from Celine making such a request, and then it would have been definitely tied to Relay for Life, because it looks like an outsider group, and since we started the policy of seeing what our revenue is, how much money we're going to be spent for such events, all events, this was a new one, and being responsible for the tax money that the city of Celine taxpayers pay, I think it's probably unfair that this $1,000 hit comes to us at this point in time, since it's coming out from the city taxpayers, coming out of my home real estate taxes. So I kind of think that we need to be very conservative in what we do, so it's not against the cause or anything else. We have to be due diligent with the monies that our taxpayers have. We raised our taxes last year. We raised our taxes last year and people could turn on us and say, "We allow races come and we sponsor this for 900 and some dollars." We're already sponsoring several things. So I think we have, I want to be accountable to the taxpayers. And this, I don't think I can at this point in time. But I respect for its purpose and the people's energy and time behind it.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. Let me make sure that there are other councilmembers who have questions specifically or comments. And then I'll come back to Mayor Protem Rhodes.
Just along the same lines as Linda, and I was surprised at the cost also. Did you organize the Summerfest 5K?
I have organized a race in the past, I have not over the last several years.
I was just wondering how similar this route was to the Summerfest 5K and how, because that is a planned route also in the same neighborhood, I think. And I was just wondering how the cost for that compared to what you're estimating the cost for this to be and if there was any way to lower them by using a slightly different route.
We have to speak to Chief Rennick.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, for the, to answer the first part of your question, the route is virtually the same as the Summerfest route. Basically follows the same course, I helped set that course up and helped set this course up as well, so the routes are pretty much the same. I don't know what the recent costs have been for Summerfest though.
Yeah, and can I just speak to earlier, I apologize, I put Steve Wyndham's name down who was with the American Cancer Society because the American Cancer Society would ultimately sign that contract. I submitted the application and perhaps I should have included that, I was in my email, but not on the actual physical application. So that was an oversight, my turn.
Chief Rennick?
Yes, the route that was given to us, Sergeant Bassel was actually in charge of all parades and 5K runs. And what he does is he estimates based on worst-case scenario, if we have to order everybody to work these points, the number that I give you is if everybody had to come in in overtime. There's certainly the possibility that a reserve or as was stated, a cadet or volunteers may be able to help, but in the worst-case scenario, I have to give you the number that it could cost maximum. Will it cost $952? Probably not, but it might. Are there things that they could do to make the route less expensive? Possibly. But I know we've got one coming up shortly that is actually about $1,200, so actually it's even more. A lot depends on where they're running it. And I have not looked at it, so I don't know exactly if there's a cheaper way of doing this or not, but I could certainly get with Sergeant Bassel.
And just to be clear, the policy of planning for, for lack of a better way to articulate it, a worst-case scenario, that was how we calculated these numbers under your predecessor, most likely under his predecessor, and that's, of course, the standard we'll be using moving forward.
Right.
One last question for Chief. So in your memo, you state that the seven traffic points must be covered by police? Those points cannot be covered by volunteers?
Like I said, I'm not sure if they can or not because I would have to look at the route. Sergeant Bassel certainly suggests that police officers be there. Now, it could be a reserve, which of course would be no cost, or it could be a cadet, once again, which would be no cost. Where this gets very expensive is the officers by contract are entitled to two hours of call and pay, even if they work an hour.
Yeah, I see that.
So it gets very expensive very quickly, as you can tell.
All right.
Did you have a comment, Mr. Girbaugh?
Comment, yeah. I mean, the reason why I'm not in support of having the fees waived is when we start looking at this, this really is more of a fundraiser. Generally, the events that we promote are something that are attracting individuals to the city or promoting economic development or some other type of community event recognizing Memorial Day Parade and so forth. Fundraising and using taxpayer dollars or implied in-kind services starts raising a question that maybe our city attorney could address, but from my previous understanding, when those two things start getting closer and closer together, it starts looking more inappropriate. So that's the reason why I made my motion the way I made it.
Mr. Rhodes, did you have additional comments, sir?
My, my question was at least partially addressed by Ms. Seibokanek's questions to Chief Rennick and that is, while it may be optimum to have police officers staffing these various points, in my experience, that staffing can also be accomplished by volunteers who have their police security vest on or whatever that terminology is. And I, I'd like to see this go back to both DPW and Police Department and see what can be done with volunteers that could be provided before we make a decision about waiving or not waiving fees.
Do the petitioners have any additional comments? We all good?
No, I just appreciate you all considering and all your thoughts are very valid as, you know, as a taxpayer, I too would want city council to be very concerned about how the money's spent, so I very appreciative of the time you're giving this. I also appreciate that you'll help us, the committee, look at other ways to save money so it's not such a tax burden.
Thank you, appreciate your time. Additional comments, Ms. Tahar?
Yeah, as, as we're looking, if we look into this further, I would also appreciate perhaps hearing from either Mr. Swetz or the city attorney about the question that Mr. Girbaugh raised as well.
Okay, very good. Do you want to comment on that now? Are you able to comment on that now? I don't want to put you on the spot.
Yeah, I can comment on it briefly. The concern that Councilmember Girbaugh referenced is a concern in the law referred to as a concern against lending the public credit, which tax dollars cannot be used solely for the benefit of providing something to private companies or persons. The kind of things that we're looking at here are things I think that are potentially legitimate because you're not, you're providing public safety-type things and so forth. But the more, the more, he's correct, the more you go down that road, the more you just want to be careful. And I think, I think maybe a bigger issue than that is the issue of consistency. And so if there's, if there's, if there's a policy, you want to evenly apply that policy and I think that's probably maybe the guiding concern here.
Thank you. Well, let me just say this and then we can obviously proceed with voting on the motion that was moved by Girbaugh, seconded by Roth, or of course, the chair will entertain a motion that supersedes the one that's on the floor now. But similar to Mr. Roth, Councilmember Roth and Councilmember Girbaugh, I also have some concerns and I appreciate our legal counsel's emphasis on consistency because we do have a policy in place where we're trying to push these community events and endeavors to, to apply at one specific given time through the year. We can assess their validity and then make sure we have the financial resources to subsidize them. And I really want to be consistent and emphatic on that because I think it's a good policy. While at the same time, I understand this is a great event that people have put a lot of time and energy into planning and obviously supporting the American Cancer Society. I mean, it goes without saying, it's a wonderful organization that does so much for people in need. So I, I guess I would be amenable to Mayor Protem Rhodes' suggestion about maybe postponing this to our next meeting, having DPW, our Police Department and the organizers take a look at this route and this proposal and see if it can't be reduced in cost. Because at the present time, I would probably be inclined to vote for the motion that's offered by, by Mr. Girbaugh and Mr. Roth, although I'm more inclined to split the difference while stating emphatically that this council's preference is that we follow the policy and that groups apply and submit their paperwork at one specific given time during the calendar year. Ms. Ragland?
A request, and I'm not sure how to formally do this, but, you know, it's sort of split, we're asking for permission to use the city streets and the second piece was to waive the fees. Given that the event is coming up very quickly, there is a possibility that the community, part of this Cancer Society too, can pay some of these fees. We can raise extra dollars. Is it possible to separate that and ask city council to approve using the streets and that we continue to work on the costs and, you know, look to the community to help support this as opposed to the city taxpayer?
Yeah, that was going to be my suggestion, that we split this motion and approve the event itself and then wait for next meeting to have more information about fees.
So preference would be then to do two, two motions then?
Yes.
Mr. or Mayor Protem Rhodes, okay. So actually, what you're offering would be an amendment to the initial motion that's been moved by Girbaugh, seconded by Roth. So to acknowledge receipt of the American Cancer Society's application for community event slash use of public right-of-ways for a Run For Your Life 5K and to acknowledge receipt of the May, you want to go all the way to?
After approve the community event application.
Okay.
Stop there.
Stop there, okay. Is there a second to that amendment?
I'll second that.
Second that amendment, okay. Is there discussion?
How is that different than what the previous amendment was?
Because he's taking off anything to do with the waiving of fees. He's removing, if I'm not mistaken, Mayor Protem Rhodes, you're removing everything after application.
That's correct. What I want to do is to give the group that's putting this together approval to continue to plan for their event. And then separately, we can talk about any waiving of fees. You know, it may well turn out that with the additional work on waiving of fees with volunteers and whatever, that it may come back to us and say, "There are no fees that need to be waived."
So his amendment, Mr. Roth, is essentially removing verbiage from the original motion.
I understand, but it's opening, leaving a door open, which I don't like being open.
Okay.
Call the question.
Call the question on the amendment, okay. So it's been properly moved by, if I'm not mistaken, by Mayor Protem Rhodes, seconded by Terry Seibokanek from the Seibokanek, to amend the original motion by subtracting all of the verbiage following application. That's correct? Correct? Okay. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay.
Nay.
Eyes have it and the motion carries. So now we need to vote on the original portion of that motion. So all that, so I need, actually, that motion's still on the floor, excuse me. So the original motion that was offered by Girbaugh, seconded by Roth, has been amended. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay.
Nay.
Who all voted on that one?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry, could you, could you clarify what we're voting on now?
Yeah, I...
So there was an amendment offered and the amendment struck all of the verbiage following application. But the original motion was not yet voted upon. So the orig, so we go back to Mr. Girbaugh and Mr. Roth's motion that has been amended and we're voting to approve that.
Can you read it in the phone?
Yep, so it would be to acknowledge receipt of the American Cancer Society application for community event slash use of public right-of-ways for a Run For Your Life 5K and to acknowledge receipt of the March second, 2015 email from Police Chief Rennick, the March tenth, 2015 email from DPW Director Fordice, and the March second, 2015 email from Fire Chief Heft, and to approve or not to approve the community event application.
Isn't that what we just voted on before?
No, you voted on amendment to remove the language following application. Okay, I know that's confusing.
We haven't done this in a while.
Okay, go.
You good with that?
Yep.
Everybody comfortable with what they're voting on? Doesn't mean you have to vote for it, okay? So every, all those in favor of the amended motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay.
Nay.
The eyes have it and the motion carries. Now, Mr. Rhodes, I think you want to offer an additional motion from the floor to postpone the waiving of fees. You don't need to do that, but...
We actually don't need to do that, we've eliminated that portion of it.
Okay.
And so they will either come back to us or not come back to us for fees.
Okay. So staff is clear about that and the applicant is clear about that? Yes, Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no, I'm, staff's not clear. So whether or not, Mr. Rhodes just said it may or may not come back. So my understanding is we still have the question of whether or not to waive the fees. It's still hanging out there.
I believe we eliminated that in the motion and so it is up to the requesting group if they wish to return to us with a request to waive fees at our next meeting with some adjustment to the fee structure. I suspect they may not come back to us at all.
So currently, the city council's not waiving fees? Correct. So they're responsible for whatever the cost is.
Unless they come back to this...
Unless they come back with a request.
Okay.
With a modified application. That make sense?
Sure.
Well, we're happy to provide you additional consensus if you have what you'd like.
So right now, there's no waiving of the fees. Staff will work with the applicant to see if we can reduce those costs and whatever ends up. So hopefully, we can reduce some costs, absolutely. In a perfect world, it, you know, be all volunteers and no cost and it'd be wonderful. But if there are costs and they, and they can't, if they say, "Well, that's just, it's too high", so then, at that point, they would, I guess, withdraw their application and say, "We're not going to do it"?
I would say.
It's our choice.
Either that or they'll come back and...
Okay, so we're, so we're on the same page then? Okay, very good. Very good, I'm good, thank you.
Just want to return to the motion just one last time. So again, and I'll work with the clerk's office to make sure these minutes are printed appropriately, but there was an amendment offered to the initial motion by Mayor Protem Rhodes, seconded by Ms. Seibokanek, to strike all of the verbiage after application, beginning with the word "and" ending with the amount $952. That amendment was supported by four councilmembers, Seibokanek, Girbaugh, Rhodes and Marl. Was opposed by Tahar and Rhodes. So that amendment passed, that verbiage was struck. Roth, excuse me, that verbiage was struck. We return then to the, the original motion, which was then amended, moved by Girbaugh, seconded by Roth, and again, same, same, same result in terms of votes. Vote, who voted in favor of it were Seibokanek, Girbaugh, Rhodes, Marl. Opposed were Tahar and Roth. Correct?
Yes.
Everyone clear on that? Okay, clear? Okay, very good, okay. We'll move on to new business item fifteen dash forty-three. This is special assessment resolution for the Salina area Fire Department. This will be a motion to approve and adopt or not adopt Resolution Number One, Special Assessment for Fire Protection 2015-2016, setting a public hearing on Monday, May fourth, 2015 to hear and consider any objections to the city's proposed share for fire protection in the amount of $341,773 for fiscal year 2015-2016. Move to approve and adopt. Thank you, Mr. Girbaugh, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Tahar. Any discussion? Ms. Bennett, do you care to comment at all?
I just wanted to remind council that this is an action that will, we'll send out a notice at this point allowing us to keep open the option to do this either under a special assessment or as part of our taxes, is the first step until we make the determination in the budget process on how we will fund that at this point. We have included it in the budget for your presentation, but this is the first step in that direction. As one other side note, as a housekeeping item, I've been asked that when you have lengthy conversations like that, if you would please try to speak closer into the microphone so that we can pick it up on the recording. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Bennett? No questions for Ms. Bennett, thank you, appreciate it. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion moved by Girbaugh, seconded by Tahar signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it and the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item fifteen dash forty-four. It actually shouldn't have Rennick written next to it, it should have Scruggs. This is a Judy Ivan grant request. This will be a motion to approve or not to approve the request to apply for a grant to the Judy Ivan Healthy Communities Endowment for a summer program entitled Yoga in the Park. Move to approve. Moved by Girbaugh, seconded by Seibokanek. Is Ms. Scruggs still here to care to make comment at all?
Well, thank you. The Judy Ivan Healthy and Healthy Communities Endowment Fund is something that's been around for quite some time. Every year, we do make application, we've been awarded grants in the past. We haven't for a little while, but we think we have a good one to offer. And it's Yoga in the Park, Saturday mornings. And it's not all finalized, so it may change from what I'm saying right now, but the idea would be to have it down at Henny Field in the summer. And then at about eight o'clock in the morning on Saturdays, then, right after yoga, people could walk uptown to the farmer's market, to the coffee shops, to Benny's, you know, Benny's Bakery or whatnot and enjoy what we have going on downtown. We do have support from the Salina Main Street, they've given a letter of support for this grant and we're just seeking your approval to go ahead and apply for that. My staff and I are working on this tomorrow to kind of finalize the grant application, which is, has to be submitted by the twentieth.
Very good. Are there any questions for Director Scruggs? Ms. Seibokanek?
EDM is early. I'm going to ask for a nine-ish.
But then all the good stuff's going to be gone at the farmer's market.
Any additional questions? No, Ms. Scruggs, thank you for your report. Any additional discussion? No, that it's been properly moved by Girbaugh, seconded by Seibokanek to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it and the motion carries unanimously. Move on to new business item fifteen dash forty-five, Community Vision 2020. This will be a motion to appro- This will be a motion to approve or not to approve the Community Vision 2020 Plan as submitted.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Tahar. Mr. Campbell, do you care to comment at all? Obviously, we've worked long and hard on this document, and we got a lot of great feedback from community members and stakeholders. And we had a special work meeting on this probably about a month ago now. But I'll let you make any comments that you care to make at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think you summed it up pretty well. Of course, the community process, I knew this is the first of the five-year Community Vision Tours, 2020 as it's called. And the city council would go through this process essentially approximately every year in review, and again, have a public meeting, a town hall-type meeting, to see if the city council's city's going in the right direction or if the community wants to do something different. So I think these are the one-year tasks. And so these are based on the changes, discussion at the most recent work session that you mentioned, Mayor. So hopefully, these were addressed, all the corrections, all the changes. Happy to do my best to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Campbell? No? Okay, any comments prior to voting? Mr. Rhodes, Mayor Protem Rhodes?
Comment, thank you very much. I distributed a copy to everyone this evening of a one-page flyer from AARP titled, "In a Livable Community, People of All Ages Can", and then it lists 14 different things. And I believe that this vision that is before us now helps to address all of those items that are listed there. It helps our community to be a livable community for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Ms. Tahar?
Just perhaps we could also mention where this will be available for review.
Please, Mr. Campbell, do you want to comment on that?
Sure, well, excuse me, it'll be, of course, on our city website, be here at City Hall in the lobby, at the library. Promoted by social media. So of course, if anybody else has any thoughts, we're happy to put it all sorts of different places.
Very good. And again, I want to thank all the community members who came out to the visioning session, and thank all my colleagues on council for their time. And I also want to thank staff, our department heads, who sacrificed some weeknights, I think a couple Friday nights evidently, to share their thoughts and perspectives. And I think it helped us create a document that I think really focuses in on the goals and objectives that this community should have to remain vibrant and to prosper in the years to come. So thank you again. If there's nothing further? It's been properly moved by Rhodes, seconded by Tahar, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. This next motion also has a small typo in it. I apologize, in the title, it should end with 2015, not 2014. So this is new business item 15-46. It's a resolution to authorize the issuance of General Obligation Limited Tax Refunding Bonds, Series 2015. This will be a motion to adopt or not adopt the resolution to authorize the issuance of General Obligation Limited Tax Refunding Bonds, excuse me, Series 2015. Is there a motion?
Move to adopt.
Thank you, Ms. Tahar. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilmember Roth. Thank you, sir. Ms. Bennett, do you care to comment at all?
Just as a reminder, that this is the Building Authority Bonds refunding this building. And the bonds were, we took in bids and received them, and there is a potential cost savings of $67,319 upon the approval of this resolution.
Any questions for Ms. Bennett? Any comments? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Tahar?
Yes, well, a comment. I would just like to say I appreciate staff's work, and Mr. Swetson, Mr. Kramer's work on keeping on top of ways we can save money on this and many other things.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, this is excellent. We appreciate you being so proactive and assisting us with this. It's greatly appreciated. Please extend those remarks to Warren, whoever happens to speak to him first. Any additional comments? Hearing no discussion. All in favor of the motion to adopt signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 15-46. This is Code Review Task Force Proposed Ordinance Amendments. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the Code Review Task Force Proposed Ordinance Amendments, and to approve or not to approve the second reading, and to adopt or not to adopt the following amended ordinances. One, liquor licensing. Two, animals. Three, law enforcement standards. Four, juvenile curfew. Five, public peace and morals. Six, weapons. Seven, blight. Eight, snow. And nine, noxious weeds.
Move to approve and to adopt.
Thank you, Mr. Gearbaugh. It's been properly moved to approve and adopt. Is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Councilmember Roth. Is Mr. Rubel still here? Do you care to comment at all on this, Mr. Rubel? Obviously, we've talked about this at length, and it was on our previous council agenda for our first reading, but I would welcome any additional thoughts you have.
No, I think we're pretty well settled into it as far as, you know, staff and administrative follow-up on it. So I think we're in good shape. The only thought I had was I saw recently where the legislature may have changed or made amendment to that airgun, I think. I don't know, that's going to affect down the road, but I guess we just have to wait and see.
Thank you, Mr. Rubel. Any questions for Mr. Rubel or any member of staff? No, any discussion? Mr. Rhodes, Mayor Protem Rhodes?
I would just like to say that as a member of that task force, along with Councilmember Tahar, there was a fair amount of discussion back and forth that went into reviewing these ordinances, and there are more to come. They may not be perfect, but they're close to it, as close as we can get at this present time, I think, with trying to include all of the possibilities without becoming overly burdensome and filled with too many words. So I appreciate council considering these for approval.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Are there additional comments? Mr. Gearbaugh?
Yeah, I'm glad that these have occurred, and I appreciate all the work that you two have done on this, plus all the staff. Just my concern, of course, when we've changed these and adjusted these ordinances, is enforcement, of course, and what we have is resources that we're going to put towards this. My curiosity is, are we still going to be reacting instead of maybe being proactive? Or are we going to try and be a little more proactive in our ordinance enforcement?
Well, I think we, I mean, we attempt to be proactive, but sometimes we are, you're absolutely right, when we utilize other departments, for instance, to help us, kind of eyes out there, if you will, like, you know, DPW or police, for instance, if they see something, even our assessor's office, when they're out, when they're out doing their fieldwork, for instance, if they come across something that they have question or concern that may be a violation, they'll let our code enforcement building inspector know. So it's certainly a team effort.
Thank you. Just from the fact that we have a new one on blight, and I know we have some concerns on some of our apartment complexes in town, that I'm hoping that this will help address some of those concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gearbaugh. Let me just add, before I talk about the motion in its totality, that I appreciate your comments, and it gets back to something that you and I have talked about, and actually, something I addressed in my State of the City address, which is having a dedicated standalone code enforcement officer, which will allow us to be more proactive on a number of these fronts. And that's something that I'm going to continue to be an advocate for. And if the financial resources are available, I'd like to see that position created in our upcoming budget. As it relates to the motion before us, I want to echo the comments made by Councilmember Mayor Protem Rhodes. A lot of hard work, a lot of time and discernment went into these amendments. It's not particularly glamorous, it's not particularly sexy, but these are important policy changes, substantive policy changes, and a result of many months, excuse me, of hard work. And so, and I only want to thank him and Councilwoman Tahar for their service on the task force, but also to former council member and Mayor Pat Little for chairing the group, all of the other members of the task force, and of course, Scott Smith and Gary Rubel and Mr. Campbell for providing a staff perspective as well. So obviously, there's more to come, but job well done, and I think this is an important first step. So thank you very much. Is there additional comments? No, then it's been properly moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Roth, to approve and to adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. The ordinances are adopted. We move on to new business item 15-48, Cypress Ridge Acceptance of Roads. This will be a motion to approve or not to approve the designation of Cypress Ridge streets to become public streets in accordance with the alternate plan layout and design according to Site Plan Review Standards. Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
Thank you, Councilmember Roth. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gearbaugh. I know the developer and some of his associates are here. Mr. Rubel, do you want to begin by making comment? And then we would welcome any thoughts that Mr. Barry has.
Those council members who are on Planning Commission probably recall that there were comments made on all people who attended, basically all parties, I mean, the planner, staff, certainly some of the public. And it seemed that most of the interest was favorable to the public streets aspect versus the private streets. And subsequently, the owner himself, in the interests of expediting the initiation of the project, he did provide a plan for either case, and subsequently resolved that it would be probably good at this time to proceed with the public street aspect of this rather than private street.
Thank you, Mr. Rubel. Are there any questions for our city superintendent, engineer? No, oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Rhodes?
The attachments to your memo, Alternate Preliminary Plan, excerpt number two, that, both of those show private roads still.
Right, the options for the public road came after the packet was issued. And also, this report was drafted and changed because the developer had agreed to go away from the two private road alternatives to the public road alternatives. So it was a moot point. I had a four-page report that did not need to come because we had settled on the public road method instead of the private road method. So it's much simpler at this point.
So the number of lots would be, as is indicated, on a straight road with cul-de-sac at the end?
The, it would be actually reduced to 27.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Tahar, did you have a question?
Yes, I had a question, thank you. I had a question about the memo under Part II considerations. You wrote, "City staff considered a possible improvement to the public streets layout plan. However, several challenges to meet the codes and standards could not be thoroughly resolved." So does that mean we're approving public roads that don't meet the codes and standards? It wasn't clear what that, how that fit into the picture.
The only, that just reflects the fact that with the private street standard, we were unable to address all the needs for setbacks, proper setbacks in respect to the road right-of-way, which had been very narrow. And so we examined that, and then, but then we found out that there were other challenges, too, regarding the lot size. Cornered lots was one of the aspects that we couldn't meet. Size of cornered lots.
Any additional questions, Ms. Tahar? No? Any additional questions for our city superintendent? Mr. Rubel, thank you, sir. Does the applicant or developer care to make any comment at this time? Very good. We appreciate you and your associates being here tonight. Are there any additional comments or discussions regarding this issue? I guess just one. This will be on the agenda at our next planning commission to approve the preliminary site plan?
Correct. I've talked to our planner, communicated with our planner, that the applicant is in the process of revising his preliminary site plan to show the configuration that should move forward.
I appreciate that. I just know there are a number of people in the audience tonight, including myself, who are eager to move expeditiously on this. So appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Rubel. Additional comments? No discussion? Okay, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Roth, seconded by Gearbaugh, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 15-49, Amendment to Professional Service Agreement with MCI LLC. This will be a motion to approve or not to approve the project scope revision number two and three for 2015 North Harris Reconstruction Project in the amount of $12,850, and to authorize or not authorize City Manager Campbell to execute the agreement. Is there a motion?
Move to approve and to authorize.
Thank you, Mr. Gearbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Tahar. Noting Mr. Fordice's absence this evening, Mr. ... Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize you were here. My faux pas. We would welcome you up to the podium to make any comment that you'd like to make.
Thank you. During the preliminary design phase of the North Harris Street Project, I reviewed the water main break history for that stretch and found a series of water main breaks on the older section of that main. There's, starting at Michigan Avenue up to approximately Clark, that main was replaced in the late 80s. The main north of Clark was the original water main from construction of that subdivision installed in the mid-'60s. And we've had three recent breaks in 2010, 2011, and 2013, and zero prior to that. And each of those breaks was outside of the frost window, if you will. It was not an issue of ground movement. And the reports showed some surface corrosion, suggesting that it's a pipe condition, not a ground condition, that had caused those breaks. So I felt it was necessary to replace that main since we are reconstructing the road over it, preserve, improve the reliability of the distribution system, eliminate, you know, the inconveniences of multiple water main breaks, and eliminate the possibility that we'll just be digging up our brand-new road in the very near future. So I asked the consultant doing the street and storm portions of the design to submit a contract revision to include design for the new water main. That is attached to the memo. The cost for that is a not-to-exceed cost of $11,000. And that includes the design and the bidding and specification support services through the whole project. In addition to that cost, there would be some additional construction engineering costs. And that would be covered under the same contract that's set up for the road project that was set up as a, basically, a unit cost. So the additional time necessary for field engineering for the water main will be paid under that contract. The additional cost there is estimated at $4,500, although that's not part of the approval tonight. Also, another addition to the design also related to water. In the area, we have an existing condition on Chandler where there's a section of main that, because of the way it was installed, we don't currently have a good method of flushing that main, which occasionally leads to some water quality problems for two residents at the end of that stuff. So the other amendment is for the same services, design specifications, bidding services, to install, to design, rather, a fire hydrant at the end of that line so that we can actually flush that and maintain good water quality at that area.
Mr. Fordice, thank you for your report. Are there questions for our DPW director? Mr. Gearbaugh, please.
Jeff, didn't we replace the lines on Tower Drive in Harper, too, when those constructions happened?[1737.88] Just thinking, it's pretty routine with that whole subdivision right now.
Right. Yeah, most of the recent road repairs in that area have included water main replacement. It is kind of basically, street by street, we're working our way through.
Yeah, thanks.
Any additional questions? No? Thank you, Mr. Fordice. Any comments or discussion? No, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Girba, seconded by Tahar, to approve and to authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes haven't, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 15-50, Capital Improvement Program. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the March 12, 2015 memo from Deputy Treasurer McDonough and to approve or not to approve the Capital Improvement Program CIP document as submitted.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Girba. Ms. Bennett, do you care to comment at all?
Just as a reminder from our last work meeting, that we have -- what this plan is that you have in front of you is a five-year plan that basically identifies the needs of our capital improvements, determines the cost, prioritizes it, and then we develop a strategy on how we're going to pay it. So you may have noted, there are some changes that have been made since the work meeting last week, some of which Mr. Fordice just included you in. And then during the budget process with department heads, we've realigned some cost into the prioritizing. So as we mentioned in the work meeting, this is a living, breathing document. What we have in here now is where -- what we are going to be presenting to the City Council for the FY '16 budget. And in '17, '18, and '19, we will adjust accordingly as we go forward. Each year before the budget process, we will go through this process again.
Very good. Appreciate your work on this, actually, all of staff's work on this. It is important, and like you said, it's a living, breathing document. So we will certainly be discussing it and reviewing it on a number of occasions in the not-too-distant future. Are there any questions for our city treasurer? No? Okay. What about discussion? Again, we did discuss this at a work meeting two weeks ago. Mr. Rhodes, please.
Just one very minor comment. There are two places where Milpon Park is referenced, and Milpon should be two separate words as opposed to one. Doesn't really impact anything, but as long as we're doing it.
I think those changes can be made without objection.
I would think so.
Anything else? Oh, Ms. Tahar, please.
Yeah, well, I would just comment, as I said at the work meeting, I think it's really important to have a five-year vision ahead of us for strategic purposes, recognizing, as you say, that things won't necessarily fall into place exactly five years, exactly the way they're described now. But having this in place and having a vision so that we can strategize is very important.
Anything further? No? Ms. Bennett, thank you.
Welcome.
If there's no additional discussion, we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Rhodes, seconded by Girba to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes haven't, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 15-51. This is traffic control order number 2322 for parking lot number four. This will be a motion to approve or not to approve traffic control order number 2322, creating additional long-term parking in parking lot number four. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Seibokanik. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Girba. Chief Renick, do you care to make any comment? It sort of speaks for itself, and we discussed this at our last meeting.
Yeah, I don't think there's any need to have too much of questions.
Okay, are there any questions for the chief or staff? Mr. Girba?
In case that, as we know, this may potentially happen as we start to get more customers and so forth, we will be able to bring this back and have it adjusted to accommodate for that, so.
Correct. The whole parking situation, parking enforcement, if you recall, will be --
Continue to be fluid and fluctuating.
Yep.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Any additional questions or comments? No, then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes haven't, the motion carries unanimously. The last action item of the evening is new business item 15-53. This is traffic control order number 2323 for no parking, 20-minute non-commercial loading zone. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt and to approve or not to approve traffic control order number 2323 for no parking, 20-minute non-commercial loading zone, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, in the transition lane -- in the transition area, excuse me, immediately north of the current parking spot on the east side of South Ann Arbor Street, and to approve the signage as submitted.
Move to approve.
Is there a -- thank you, Mayor Protem Rhodes. Is there a second?
I'll second with just one thing. I want to make sure that this is marked on the -- before the signs go up or whatever, that it's marked properly on the pavement.
Oh.
Because right now, it's got the yellow triangle there, and I'm worried that that's going to be distracting.
Okay, so you'll second approval for discussion?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So it's been properly moved by Rhodes, seconded by Girba to acknowledge receipt and to approve. Mr. Rhodes, since you're bringing this motion before us this evening and since you're the mover, do you care to comment first?
Yes, I would. Thank you. This is, in my way of thinking, another effort in the continuing process of providing the proper parking and transition spaces that we need to keep our downtown working as best as it can. And again, as Mayor Marl indicated earlier, all of our parking requirements are going to be reevaluated in June, I believe it is, after -- after they've been in place for a bit. So I would appreciate council's support.
Very good. Mr. Roth?
I thought we approved that use the parking space, the first parking space, as a 20-minute place. Now we're rescinding what we did and moving it forward in transition area. That's exactly where it reads to me.
No.
It says, "In the transition area directly north of the last parking space." So now it's in the transition area, not that first parking space.
Creating something new.
Well, what we have approved now is that transition -- that that 20-minute place is that first parking space. Why are we changing it? There's ample parking way it is being enforced now. To me, it's rather foolish just to bump it forward, and I think it's much more safety in mind for as we need that extra space for traffic stacking up to making right-hand turns or left-hand turns. If there's a lineup in the left-hand turn lane, you're cutting people off on the lane and especially going that direction at the peak parking driving times, in the morning and at night. It's bad news. We actually should have more space in the transition lane instead of cutting another space out of it. We solved this issue before. And I would appreciate it, have this information in our packet to study and question beforehand.
And it would have been, but I was on vacation for the last two weeks. I just returned.
Well, what preempted this to come about? Can you give me the background on it?
Want me to?
If you may, if you'd like to.
I don't know if doing the back and forth is appropriate here, but it became apparent that while we had thought that we had resolved the questions, the difficulties with our previous issue of changing the last existing space on the east side, the northern one, to a 20-minute parking, what at least I failed to take into consideration was that it was 20 minutes of parking for anybody for any reason, and therefore did not provide a space for -- built to just wanted to drop off somebody at Max or at Kerrigan's or for any of the business owners who had a short-term need for a place to park their vehicles while they were unloading or loading things into their businesses. So that's why I brought it up.
Additional comments? Mr. Girba?
Isn't this -- I mean, one of the reasons why we're looking at this again, and I know I was the one that's saying about stacking everything, I've been up and observing it too, and not so much concerned about that as much. But this was being used like this anyways, wasn't it?
Yes.
So people had a car parked in that parking spot, and we're parking in front of that car, and we're unloading and loading in there. I mean, I know there is a concern, and that's why I'm glad we're looking at this in June. So hopefully by that time, we can have a review, we'll have some information, and if this isn't potential at that thing, we can rescind it again.
Right.
So, but my one concern is that we clearly marked that because right now, the way it looks, there is that yellow triangle there, and it looks like you cannot do anything, you shouldn't be doing anything there. So before we put a sign up that says park and looks like we're doing two contradictory things, that we have it clearly marked appropriately.
Ms. Seibokanik?
You know, my concern is just with all the signage that we're putting up. So there's already a sign now in place, is that correct, that says 20-minute parking on the spot? And then the next spot up, we're going to have another 20-minute. It may be slightly confusing to get used to, and it is a lot of signage for almost, you know, every spot going along there.
And as Mr. Rhodes and Mr. Girba just indicated, I understand the concerns, and I'm certainly sensitive to those. You know, that area, that space had been utilized as a non-commercial loading and unloading zone for many, many years, many decades, realistically. And to my knowledge, it didn't create significant problems. So again, sensitive to the concerns and very cognizant of them, I think it's appropriate to move forward and to approve this and be mindful of it, study it, evaluate it, and reassess it with all of our parking issues in June. So, Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Ms. Mary. Just for clarification in regards to Mr. Girba's question, my understanding is that the intent would be that the transition area would still be in place, but it wouldn't be used during the nine to five. So then once after the nine to five time period, it would go back to that transition area?
Oh, okay.
And so we would --
I just didn't understand.
Sure, right. So we would -- it would be painted as it is now. Similarly, across the street in the commercial loading zone, it's that yellow crosshatch, if you will. So.
Okay, no, the crosshatching makes sense. I was just saying, it looks solid yellow now, I believe, but that was just a confusion.
Clear, Mr. Girba?
Yep.
Additional comments? Ms. Tahar?
Yeah, I would just comment about this and about the changes we've just made to parking lot number two. Yeah, four. Two. Two.
Four. Tonight was four.
Tonight was four. Okay. Where we've created a fairly stupendous number of differing parking conditions in the parking lot, depending on the spaces in the parking lot, different rules for certain subsets of the parking lot. We're creating different rules here for individual parking spaces on Ann Arbor Street. In my previous life as a librarian, one of the concerns was signage, and there is research that shows the more signs you have, the less people heed them and gain useful information from them. So I hope that when we come around to assess all of this later, we think also about simplifying the signage as much as possible. Throughout the whole city would be great, but downtown is a good starting point.
Certainly. And again, it's my goal, I would hope that this is shared by the entire council, is to essentially leave this issue of parking and parking enforcement alone for the next two months, continue to evaluate and monitor the ebbs and flows, and then have a conversation, a dialogue with downtown business owners and with stakeholders at that first meeting in June, hear what they have to say, assess the information, the data. We always talk about making data-driven decisions, and then determine consensus amongst ourselves how best we should move forward. Mr. Girba?
Just one real quick. Part of this change, too, is also a little bit from a more of a squeaky wheel issue. So that I think, as a result of this, we need to also consider the other four blocks where potentially this type of situation may be occurring and may need to address for that, too. So at this point, we're doing this, but I make sure that we all understand, we are kind of setting a precedent for doing this, so. In my terms of being equitable and really considering everything, whatever we do with Michigan, I have designed, redesigned, and whatever we're doing now in terms of north and south Ann Arbor Street, that all of those be considered and that this isn't just a one-time-only thing because somebody really squeaked.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Roth?
I heard your statement a couple meetings back about far as you wanted to keep things consistent and have it reevaluated in a couple months. Since then, we've changed the park number parking spots that's all-day parking spaces in lot number one -- or lot number two. And then we changed now the number of spaces again in lot number four. And we're changing again where we're doing Brian along South Ann Arbor Street. It doesn't seem to be following what you -- I just heard what you said. And I put safety of the people, especially the drivers, ahead of parking or loading. Safety's number-one issue, and I truly believe we need that transition thing because when people are turning left, if you get three cars in there, and when you're approaching, going north on that -- at that intersection, there are so many cars coming straight through that you don't have a chance, and people want to make a left end, and others want to -- it just doesn't happen. I sat through several like changes when the traffic's busy, and that shouldn't be if you're making a right-hand turn or planning to go straight through. That is more of a big safety issue. And it should be -- the safety of the drivers should be ahead of convenience for people loading and unloading. When we have a convenient device, we're doing such. And I think we're going after the squeaky wheel every council meeting, and I think we need to stop that and do as the mayor just said.
Well, again, Mr. Roth, I'm cognizant of the concerns. I understand those. I think one of the reasons why the petitioner and the mover of this motion limited the time between 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM was because of a number of the concerns that you've just articulated, because most of the traffic and most of the congestion occurs during rush hour, before 9:00 and after 5:00. I'm certainly cognizant, certainly sensitive to your concerns and your issues, and I do understand that, to a certain extent, we have deviated somewhat from the standard that was articulated in late December when we began parking enforcement. But I do want to note that the changes that have been made up to this date, and the clerk's office can correct me if I'm wrong, were not changes that were exclusively supported by Brian Marl, the mayor, but were endorsed and supported, I believe unanimously, by everyone on council. So again, I sympathize with your concerns. I understand those, and the standard moving forward is to monitor this issue, to assess the ebbs and flows, and to have a thoughtful discussion in June on how best to move forward. If there's nothing further, it's been properly moved by Rhodes, seconded by Girba to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes haven't, the motion carries. We move on to discussion items. Commission, committee, and task force reports from council members. That's easy, okay? No commission, committee, or task force reports. How about reports or other announcements? Ms. Seibokanik, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Just another reminder from the Celine Chamber that Celine Salutes is Friday, March 27th at 5:30 at the high school. Reservations can be made online at clinechamber.org or by calling the office at 429-4494. And, you know, we saw all of the Youth of the Year nominees today. The honorary for Youth of the Year, Emily Deal, will be one of our honorees, along with Dave Eberlein for Citizen of the Year, and Larry and Carol Osterling for Lifetime Achievement, and John Olson for the Vision Award. So we hope to see everybody there.
Thank you, Ms. Seibokanik. And just to note that if councilmembers are interested in attending that event, if you let Mr. Campbell know, he will make sure that either he or Justine Meyer in his office are CP on your behalf.
Thank you.
Other reports or announcements? Mr. Rhodes?
I would just like to announce, for those who don't know it already, that Celine Mainstreet has hired a new executive director, a gentleman named Riley Hollenbach, who seems eminently qualified, and we're looking forward to working with him and having him continue to work with us in the community to improve our quality of life, particularly in that area assigned to Celine Mainstreet.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Any other reports or announcements? No? Celine Area Historic Society lease agreement, Rentschler Farm Depot Museum, there was some information in your packet. Mr. Campbell, do you want to comment on that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you recall, City Council voted to purchase adjacent property last year, yeah, last year, I guess, to the current depot museum. And so as we were -- as staff was reviewing the current leases, because as you may recall, the city has a lease for both the depot museum and the Rentschler Farm Museum with Celine Area Historical Society, and they manage those and do a fabulous job of managing those two museums for the city. But if you look in the current lease language, it's a little bit, I guess, not necessarily cumbersome, but unclear as to who is responsible for what, if you will, because it talks about the historical district commission on behalf of the city. And as you can see from the city attorney's opinion that is attached, the concern is that -- a couple things. One, there's some things that one might interpret the HDC to be doing when they don't have that authority or those resources. And two, that it's our opinion, city attorneys as well as mine, that the city council should have sole authority and approval of what goes on on their properties. And so I wanted to bring this up as a discussion, and to see if council shared that opinion. If not, then we'll maintain status quo. But our recommendation would be that we would modify the current leases to make it more clear that the Celine City Council would have the say on what -- and certainly still working, having a great relationship, but as we go forward, as I know there's desires to redevelop or develop the new property, for instance, adjacent to the depot museum that was recently purchased. So happy to answer any questions or comments.
Let's start off with questions for Mr. Campbell. Mr. Roth?
On the letter or the memo from Scott Smith, he refers into On the letter or the memo from Scott Smith, he refers into quite often, "HDC," the Historic District Commission, and the lease refers to far as the Celine Area Historic Society. Could I have some clarification on that?
Sure, Mr. Roth. So at the beginning, at the title, it says, "The City of Celine, Michigan Municipal Corporation and the Celine Historic District Commission here and after called the city." So anywhere you say, see the word "city" in the document is referring to the HDC. And so that's where the question comes up, as far as who in fact has the authority to approve or not approve things going on at the two, the two museum properties. And that's the, that's where the clarity question comes from.
Any additional questions, Mr. Roth?
Well, I'm just wondering far as if that is the authority of the Historic District Commission to grant leases and so on, I feel better, more comfortable if it were the city itself instead of a commission doing such.
Okay. Let me get Mr. Gearbox in this, in on this discussion, because he has a perspective on a number of different fronts. So, Mr. Gearbox, the floor is yours.
Yeah, we talked about this actually at the Celine Area Historic Society's board meeting this last week, and part of my discussion with it was that concern is that there was these different terminologies between HDC and the city. But then also was clarified at the board meeting is that the depot's in Historic District, but the Farm Museum is not. So there's overlap and who has responsibility, so forth, and it's like streamlining, streamlining this to get it to be a point where the information that when they request to do something or approval is smoother, comes directly from the authors, authors of whoever comes up with it, but also that the city is aware of these things that are happening, because it's like any other kind of leased property, any kind of changes of things that are occurring with it, you're, the landlord's going to want to know what's happening to it and whatever else. And I think also it's recognizing more of what the aspect of what the Historic Society does and how we can work with our Historic District Commission to continue to make sure that everything is, was it copasthetic or whatever, and that we, I'm looking for a big word from the mayor.
Thanks.
And I think at this approach, since we've got three different properties and we're bringing this all together, it's time to look at a lease that basically was written almost over 25 years ago, if not longer, that needs to just be updated and brought on track.
So, just to be clear, Mr. Gearbox, you're in favor of Mr. Scott's recommendations, correct, sir?
Yes, totally.
Very good. What are, of course, the chair will entertain any questions, but I'm also interested in consensus on this issue. Mayor for Tim Rhodes?
I agree that the existing lease needs to be updated and cleaned up a bit, but as a past president of the Historic Society, I would not be in favor of unnecessarily encumbering the efforts of the Historic Society. They do a great job, and I don't want to get in their way. Certainly, any permanent structures that are to be constructed on the city-owned property, which is leased to the Historic Society, the approval for those permanent structures ought to go through the normal process, which would be planning commission and maybe city council, depending on what it is. And I also had the same thought about the Historic District Commission, and only one of those parcels is in a Historic District. And I don't know that it's appropriate to have the Historic District Commission approve changes, modifications on parcels that are not in the Historic District.
Let me stay down at this end of the dais. Ms. Seibokanik, do you have an opinion on this matter?
Just that I am in favor of reviewing the leases.
Okay.
And while I think deferring to the Historic Society for suggestions and requests for improvements on the property is where things should originate, I think the use of all of the resources to make the best choices for those historic properties involves the HDC and the city.
Okay, very good. Ms. Tahar?
Yes, I agree with Ms. Seibokanik.
Okay. Mr. Roth?
I'm definitely in favor of having updated leases, but I still like to have a clarification. I don't feel comfortable that a commission can sign a lease for the city. I feel that's the city's responsibility. I'd like to have an opinion from our attorney.
Do you want to comment on that? Roger?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. That's actually the basis, I think that's the root of Scott's concern, is that the HDC is a commission, it's not the owner of the property, so it's not properly the landlord. And in the updating of the leases, there'll just be a proper delineation of what powers and authorities in the lease will be handled by the city, what will be done by staff, and certainly the Historic District Commission could play a role, but it's really not technically a role of landlord. So we're agreeing with you.
So I'd like to have that the new leases definitely contain that language.
Okay, very good. And I'm also in favor of Scott's recommendation. So you feel like you have consensus and can bring this back as an action item in a subsequent meeting?
Yes, sir. As Mr. Smith's memo states, it will work, of course, with the entities, with the Celine Area Historical Society, HDC, and obviously the city council, but we'll bring, so we'll bring some language forward in the, in the not-too-distant future.
Beautiful. Thank you kindly. If there's nothing further on that, are there any other reports or announcements, discussion items? No? Then we come to the public comment period. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments?
(inaudible).
Take your time, Mary.
Thank you. It won't count in my three minutes?
No. When you start talking, we'll start the timer.
Thank you.
I can pass it down for you, Mary.
Okay.
It looks like you got plenty.
Uh-uh?
No, you got plenty. Just give it, no, you got just enough. You want to give one to legal counsel? I have. Oh, okay.
This is the annual report of the Historical Society. Do you want to?
Your records.
Mary Laronas, 373 West Bennett, and I'm here to make the annual report for the Historical Society, the group that operates the two museums that the city owns. So I won't, you can read the entire report, I hope you will read the entire report, but I wanted to highlight just a couple of things. Under attendance and volunteer hours, total attendance at our two museums was 5,850. That's the number of people who actually signed the books. There's probably at least another 100 or more who didn't sign the books, so we can safely assume there were 6,000 or 7,000 visitors to the, to the museum, and many of those people are out-of-town people, so it does bring people to our community. And under volunteer hours, this year, we tabulated 3,833 hours, and again, there were probably many more hours that weren't tabulated. And since Michigan nonprofits are allowed a value of $2213 for each logged hour, our volunteers donated $84,824 in time donated to activities at the, mostly at the museums. And then the only other thing I wanted, wanted to highlight in particular was our business members. This year, we had 46 businesses who paid $75 apiece to belong to our society. They are huge support. Each one of them gets this thing that they can display on the wall, saying they are a business member of our society, and I do notice them around town. So our business community has been very supportive, and so has the community as a whole. We have had a very successful year, and, and it's primarily due to the fact that our community does back the activity of the society and the city as the owner of the museums. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Appreciate your time and appreciate your work, and please thank all the board members and all the volunteers for their efforts.
I will do that.
Thank you kindly.
You notice as we get older, it takes us longer to get up here. Mary Hess, and on the, your draft of the vision, walkable community is so important. As I get older, I really don't worry about skate parks or bicycle paths, or I think that we should be able to have safe sidewalks, first and foremost, for walkable. Some of the concerns, and I think I brought up to mayor and the city manager, is a post, there's a post mailbox by side of Brecken Grill. And it really, if you, you know, it incumbents people walking by. And I don't know how many of you have seen the mail truck, but the mail truck parks right on the yellow line to go to the mailbox, so he literally is stopping traffic, or that traffic has to go over into the other lane. And I requested that if we could send a letter to the post office department requesting that the mailbox be moved away from the main four corners. The other thing is walking. Signs on Key Bank Corner, grew to six on Friday. Now, they blow over even if you got two. I think bigger is better. I mean, they're huge. And I'm not picking up signs, I know other people do, but I think it's important, as far as the signs, apparently, Mr. Campbell was very kind that there's only supposed to be three. And some of them don't even, they just, "I got a good cause." And they are all good causes, but it was icy a couple weeks ago, and I almost fell going into the Key Bank because it's slick. Now, luckily, I don't have a wheelchair, I don't have a walker, I don't have crutches, but I have a right to walk on the five unencumbered feet width of sidewalk. The other thing is in front of Benito's, of course, that's the parking area for unloading the trucks for the restaurants of Brecken and the other one, and Benito's. There are big trucks. Can't the city say, "We don't have enough room for you to be bringing these huge trucks and parking on South Celine Mile Road"? Last week, there's a huge truck. Here it is again, in the path of where the traffic is. I can't believe no one else has seen them parked there. It's dangerous. And we should, for safety, those vehicles should be able to go and go around the corner without coming upon a truck.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. Are there additional citizen comments? Well, let me just, I want to acknowledge that, and I know you're aware of this, Mrs. Hess, and I hope most of the audience is aware of this as well, but we are going to be doing some serious work on our sidewalks, not just downtown when they're reconstructing US 12 in 2016, but also this year, rectifying a number of deficiencies in our sidewalk inventory. And you're indeed correct, the number of signs per policy that should be placed in front of Key Bank is never to exceed three signs. So if you or any other citizen sees four, five, six, please let us know, and we'll rectify that situation. But we appreciate your comments. If there's nothing further, just want to note that we do have two upcoming meetings in April, on the 6th and the 20th, and two work meetings beginning at 6:30 to discuss the budget. I believe we already excused the absence of Janet Dillon, so we can dispense with that. So at this time, I would seek a motion to adjourn this regular council meeting at 9:19 p.m.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Seibokanik. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Tahar. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Say nay. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.